Okay, call the meeting to order at 6:40. First order business is public comment. Nathan?
Hi, guys. Thanks for serving. Quick concern is that my daughter's playing field hockey and I came to the initial information session which was held here in the library. And there was a couple from Roxbury who were concerned about their daughter being able to participate because practice is at 4:30 to 6:00. The activities van leaves at 5:10 from middle school. So I just, I want to make sure that's on people's radar and as, you know, I suspect it's one of those unanticipated inclusion issues, but it'd be a shame if the one or two kids that want to participate in sports.
See, that microphone doesn't do anything for us. It does it for their...
Yeah, it does it for the...
So the concern is, so, field hockey practice is 4:30 to 6:00 every day after middle school. The activities bus going back to Roxbury leaves the middle school at 5:10. So if a student wants to participate in field hockey at the rec fields and make it back in time for the 5:10 bus, they're going to get 20 minutes of practice. That may be only one student, but anyway, it's just one of those sort of curveballs that may or may not have been anticipated in the thinking about how this all comes together, but I'm hoping that folks can respond to that and make sure that we're including all Roxbury kids in all activities and getting them home.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Nathan. And I know that Pam is working to make sure that it's... As I said, Pam is definitely working to make sure we accommodate Roxbury. So, Steve?
Hi.
So as many of you know, unfortunately, Peter Sterling has stepped down from the board and we want to thank Peter for his, I think, three-plus years of great service on the board. It was, I think, a time of a lot of accomplishments and he played a large role both up here and working in committees and behind the scenes to, I think, make a lot of great things happen. So, so we thank Peter, but it also means that we have to replace Peter. There will be some, I think there's a notice on the website already and I'll send some reminders by social media, but the, the protocol for replacing a vacancy on the board is that the board replaces that vacant position until the next...
Thinking maybe it was a leftover and we thought...
No, no. It's a new thing.
Okay.
Particular to us. Doesn't mean that there was some people in the past who sort of legitimately have a board.
Did you say confer or confirm?
Confer. The word in the statute is confer. It's unclear what exactly that means. We feel if we get a vote on it, that's about as much confering as the city council will be.
Got it.
Okay, so then just to clarify for the audience, so we'll be advertising on the website and this meeting. Will it be in any of the papers? Will the vacancy be posted anywhere else? We're not planning to put it in the papers. We will push it out on social media.
The bridge did ask me about it.
Yeah.
And I gave him the...
Yeah.
Front porch floor, maybe?
We can put it on front porch floor, too. And I believe Steve Mills has already explained the process in an article. He at least asked me about it.
Is there, so there, but I want to be clear because I'm imagining it in the reverse situation where, let's say, a Roxbury member needed to be replaced and there's a predominance of monопillar votes on this board. So I understand the need for the select board of Roxbury to confer, but in a case as if it were that, or in this case, what, is it fair game for, it's a strict vote, so that means the Roxbury representatives in this case will have their votes on who replaces this person, even though it's a monopillar person. And in, in the other situation, the monopillar members of the board would, would have the majority vote in selecting the Roxbury person.
Yes.
To fill, and I'm, and that makes sense why the select board would have to...
Yeah.
Be happy with that. So I think I'm understanding this, but it's new.
Yeah, it's new. And I think, I think that's the, that's probably what the legislature had in mind when it put that in, whereas, you know, if there was a town like Roxbury that's outvoted on the board and they wanted, you know, say the monopillar people wanted someone who was maybe from Roxbury but didn't necessarily represent Roxbury the way Roxbury would want to be represented, then Roxbury could go to break out.
But for this case, Roxbury members of this board should feel confident in participating in this process.
Yeah, it says, all nine members will vote on, well, except me unless there's a tie, will vote on an appointment.
And Peter, who doesn't belong...
Eight members.
Yeah. Peter, who's no longer on the board, who's officially doing something else with his Wednesday. And then, I think, so any further questions on that? Just a clarifying question. Heather's not in the audience. Is anybody taking notes this evening?
I told her because we were going into executive session. So far, she's going to watch this part of the meeting on tape, which she does anyway, to take her notes. I was just being kind to an employee who worked all day long.
Okay, thanks.
But she'll be here after the executive session.
Any other comments on replacing Peter Seig? And then, next item before we go into executive session, I know Heather is patiently waiting, the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I think we approve the consent.
Second?
Including the additional...
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Now we need a motion to go into executive session, but I think the person needs a motion that we...
The purpose is for advice from our legal counsel?
Exactly.
So I don't, no, we need two motions for that.
You can just go straight into executive.
Well, you just have to move to go for that purpose.
Okay.
It's not the one that needs to find.
Do you have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move to go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you post? We're back. And we're here to hear the Sback results presentation from Kirkland Director Mike O'Leary. Did you have that properly mic'd?
Thanks for having me. What I have prepared here is just an overview of our Sback results, an explanation of how we're going to use those results to our benefit, and I'll be able to answer any questions you might have, hopefully. So on the first slide, this is generally how we did in 2017, 18. I have the scale over here on the side. This is the percentage of students that got a 1, a 2, a 3, and a 4. Blue is your ELA and red is your math. So we had about 64% of our students proficient or higher in ELA and 47% in math. And I'm going to dig deeper into those, but that's, those are the results that are on the paper. That's kind of what everyone sees. And when we talk about Sback, one of the things that you don't hear a lot about are claims and targets. And claims are generally these broad statements of categories like writing or reading that they talk about in Sback. And when you dig down a layer deeper, there are these things called targets, which are essentially the skills or evidence that we want students to show that they're reaching these common core standards. So when we look at our results, we're able to dig down and see those results, actually quite a great interface with the Sback assessment to show us what's going on. And for example, in 2017, 2018 in ELA, the claim of writing was our lowest area, a place where we need to look at. This is the state comparison, so this is us in the blue. This is the state average. These are preliminary results, so you may see some shifting eventually, but that's what's on there now. You can see we were above the state average in all grades. So in ELA, when we, we looked at claims instead of writing, we dug deeper into the targets and these are the things that we were doing really well. For example, there were more than I could fit on a slide, but this is an example of the information we get. So we know that we're doing pretty well with target 10, word meaning. And it's kind of interesting because a lot of people assume that we're not doing a lot of vocabulary work and we're, we're doing okay in that. Grade 3, target 11, reasoning and evidence, we're also very strong in that. But it also shows us what we need to focus on. So a target 7, language use, interpret and use language by distinguishing literal and non-literal forms, that's an area where we can focus in a little bit more. And the same with writing, grade appropriate grammar usage, things like that. And that's shown to us at each grade level, so we can really dig deep and see what's going These are some more of those target areas by grade level, just some examples. This isn't all of them, but in grade 3, here's some areas that we might want to look at, grade 4, grade 5, all the way down to 9. This really helps us hone in our professional learning that we're talking about and good discussions, and also helps us look at our local assessment data and understand what we can align and look at. Here's our math scores, same setup as before. So the blue is the us and the red is the state. We were below the state average in two grade levels, grade 3 and grade 9. Couple things to note, and I talked about this on the next slide as well, this is the first year that we've given it to grade 9. It was grade 11 in previous years. And also, we have an influx of students to the high school in grade 9 that haven't been in our system. And the area where we were, need to focus most according to this information was concepts and procedures. And I'll dig a little deeper into that in the next slide.
Could I just, a quick clarifying question? Is that the current grade 3 and grade 9, or is that grade 3 and grade 9 last year?
Last year.
So it's current grade 4 and grade 10?
Yes. Yeah, the timing of the results is always kind of funky.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
And it moves from year to year, so that's a little interesting. So the math targets, when we dug a layer deeper below those claims, one of our strengths was solving real-world mathematical problems. This is from grade 6. This is my example in grade 6. And in grade 6, one of the areas that we could focus in on was applying and extending previous understanding of number systems. And we have those examples for every grade level. I didn't put them all here, but we are able to get information about what we're seeing that helps really guide our discussions. And clearly, you know, when we have any grade levels, but in math, these were our lowest areas, were math. So we want to look at that a little deeper. This is our performance over time.
Can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're changing the scale on these. We're starting in the 40s on the ELAs and starting at 0 on the math. I'm just, I'm getting confused by how we're doing relatively...
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, I'm sorry. This is, it just sets it to a bit, basically, essentially what it does, so it goes, it levels to wherever it is. These percentages are the percentages proficient or higher.
Right, but if we look at like a 46 versus a 52 in math, and then we look at, I don't know what it is in ELA, but, you know, see how you're starting at zeros?
Yeah.
So it looks like we're pretty close.
Yeah.
And when you go to the other scale, it looks like we're gapingly ahead or whatever, you know?
Yeah, you're right.
And I'm, I'm just like, wait a minute, we can't be that different than the, than the average, but we're really not. If you use a different scale, I'm just being, I'm like, it just looked weird. And now I'm like, okay, now, we're not, it's not that different. Okay, okay.
Well, the other thing about this scale is the assumption when you look at it, first off, is that 100% is at the top, and that is not true.
Correct.
You're only at 60%.
Oh, right, another point, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
So again, we were below grade 3 and grade 9. These are the targets that we're going to look at, some of the targets that we wanted to put out.
Mike, can I have a backup question?
Sure.
Just, perhaps I just don't understand, why, if you're testing in 11th grade, you're compared to other 11th graders, and we're now testing at 9th, and we're comparing to other 9th graders, why the difference? Why the drop?
Why did they change it?
Yeah. Well, not, not the function, why did they move it from 11 to 9? I understand it. You headed at 9, you know more what it is you need to address. I concur with that. But then why are, when, if we do so well compared to other 11th graders, why aren't we doing so well as compared to other 9th graders?
Yeah, so there's, there's a bit of, I get to that later on when I talk about what we're going to do with this information.
Okay.
A little bit, but remind me if I don't answer the question.
Okay, all right.
So this is our performance over time. Again, remembering that this was the first year we assessed 9th graders, but our general trend in achievement has been since 2015. And then, we started to look at the subgroups. So we started to look really at those economically disadvantaged, that's the term that the state uses, economically disadvantaged students. They represent 21% of our total assessed population. 12% of our economically disadvantaged students are on an IEP and 94% of those students did not achieve proficient. So it's definitely an area where we, we want to look. The red represents below the standard, so 52% of our, our economically disadvantaged students were below the standard in ELA and...
66.
This won't worry for me there, but...
66.
66% below the standard in that.
Wait a minute, this is 94%. Oh, IEP.
Yeah.
Never mind, thank you.
So this is the what next part. So one of the things that we didn't have time to do yet is really dig into those cohorts to answer that question, you know, why are we doing so well at 11th grade and 9th grade looks different? Part of it is, I think it doesn't, it shows the growth in high school. The other part is, Mike, the grade, and I found out, we had 34 students move into our school in 9th grade last year that weren't in our school system. They were in private schools or homeschooling or some other alternative situation. That's not pointing a finger, but it's a contributing factor in the data. So from 8th grade to 9th grade, we had a bump of 34 students that we had assessed the year prior.
Well, the other thing is, they did not have advantage of the curriculum presented in our school system.
Yeah, that's it.
Assuming that was good.
Yep. We have to look at the scale score analysis. So one of the things that you're going to hear from us in the ESU, when we get our report card eventually from ESU, is that they'll be looking at scale scores. And essentially, scale scores will show year to year. A student could get a 2 in 3rd grade and a 2 in 4th grade, and that doesn't show the growth, but when we look at the scale score, we can see how far students actually grow year to year.
Individual students?
Yeah, and cohorts and team members.
Yeah, right.
Yep. So, and that is something that's often missed when we just report out on 3s and 4s. So that's, that's another layer that we're going to go into. IAB administration analysis, so there are these essentially questions and tasks that you can unpack for students that are really good. It's not teaching to the test, it's not preparing for the test, any of that stuff. They're just really thoughtful problem-solving things to work through with kids. And we can gain a lot of information about kids, how kids learn, how our instruction's going through using those. So we're going to look at those this year. And then more claims and target analysis, really digging in at a deeper level, looking at cohorts, looking at kids, or a small enough school system that we can really identify these students and figure out what we need to do. So that's the next layer. Second week in September, we get to it. But we're, we're really working on it. And then there's some additional slides and charts. I didn't want to leave Roxbury out, even though our results from previous year were going to include them. These are their results for grade 3 and grade 4. We're still going through some stuff with the state trying to get access to the results and be able to access their information, so this is the best I could do for the moment. But you can see definitely some of the same math concerns, so that aligns with the work that we're doing nicely in terms of the commentary schools. And then these lovely charts are a breakdown of each grade and each achievement level so that you can look at them and kind of pick it apart. You can get really lost in the data, it's really fun. Like Libby and I can geek out for a couple hours if we don't look up, so...
These bars should be represented like as stacks or pies probably to give us a better sense, because they allow it up to 100, right? Each bar, each set of bars that is to 100?
Each set, that's okay, yep.
Okay.
One of the things that charts like this tell me or jump out at me right away is that we have a roller coaster going on. It's not the same. So typically, when I see roller coasters like that, I start to ask questions like, our scores on this particular assessment are based on the cohort of kid, not on the teaching, right? So essentially, if our teaching was right where the same in every grade level matched to the targets that we want them to get to, you would see consistency, you would see this. But when it's like this, it's based on the cohort of kid. So, so what, I question impact then, you know? So we want to, we want to look at that trend data over the last couple of years and see if that's the same. It's the grade 7 cohort that was so strong. Were they, were they strong in 6th grade and 5th grade as well? You know, is that a strong cohort of kid? And why isn't the grade 6 cohort that had such good scores? You know, like, what's going on there? When I see roller coaster scores, that, those are those types of questions I ask. And we're right at, we're at the question asking state right now.
Yeah.
We don't know the answers to anything.
Thank you for asking the question.
Yeah.
And those last two are consistent. The top line is 50%.
Yes.
Go for it. So, I noticed on this, on the slide that showed the trend line going down, it also shows the trend line going down for the state as a whole. And, I'm sorry, and I just wondered if there's...
No, we're going down, we're going down to the ELA and math.
Yep, this is ELA.
Okay, so that is just ELA and math.
Yeah.
So we're not, so the trend line for the state is not down?
I'd have to look.
Okay.
I think for the most part it's static, but I'm not sure.
It's static. Okay, all right, thanks.
That's a, that's a job.
I don't want to, do you have more to go? I don't want to...
No, that's it.
Okay, well, so the other piece of this, as a parent, I am faced with this, you know, testing question every year, you know, the option, you know, do you exercise your opt-out kind of thing? And as a school board member, I'm like, no, we're not going to opt out, we're going to contribute data, right? And it's good for our students to learn how to take tests and all that other stuff. But there's also a, a group of folks who, who feel like, let's just do as little testing as possible for our kids. So what I'm, the reason I said this, I want to know how we're doing on our participation percentages.
Yeah.
And does, and are we seeing differences by cohorts there? And is that influencing our scores by cohort in terms of who's opting out?
So, I have several answers-ish to that question. Number one, so what I'm looking at with this data right now is just raw spreadsheets.
Absolutely.
So, and on there, it doesn't say who opted out or who didn't. So I, I'm not particularly sure of that. There were several exempt or expired notifications, which means, one of several things, it means a student either started a session and didn't finish, or didn't take the session, and I'm not sure. There were several of those and we get a 0 for each one of those.
We get a...
We get a 0.
They grade it as a 0.
Yes.
Leaving it out.
If they begin but don't finish?
If they begin but don't finish.
You have the option of coming back to finish.
But I, I understand, that's important in Sback. But if they choose not to participate, it's not a 0.
It is a 0.
Yes, it's a 0.
Any child in our district who, in these cohorts that chooses not to opt, we get a 0 averaged in.
Correct.
Yes.
So it's...
Well, that's interesting.
There are other major...
It's a tragedy to come.
There are.
Yeah, I mean, we, there was, schools went into like panic mode when people started talking of opt-out because they, they can pull our funding, they can pull funding from us because of that.
Who's they?
The AOE.
AOE.
So, so there's other, there's other consequences to that action. But at the same time, this is an assessment. It's not the only assessment we look at. It's a big assessment to show not necessarily individual scores and what we can do with individual kids, but does our program match the rigor of the standards that, that are out there? That's the, that's the major overall question that we're asking. And are we continually to increase our ability to meet that rigor? So a chart like this, you know, as, as a first timer to this district with Mike and I, that's a worrisome chart. You know, we, we need to flip that around. And so, it's a, it's an assessment that, that for programmatic measures is important to us as a district. And as a board member, I think that would be a message that I'd want you to, to tell the public.
The other thing about this is, if, if you do no assessments, you, everybody might seem happier, but you have no idea then how everybody's doing. So for the parents that say, I don't want so many assessments, I don't want a lot of them, but you have to have enough to determine whether your child is getting the information you're presenting.
And I think there's a perception out there that, that ELA is testing not the complete assessment or perhaps the best assessment, but I think there's also a fear that the teachers start teaching differently because of the assessment. And I think communicating that that's not the case.
But we want them to, right?
Well, I mean, we want them to teach rigorously, but we don't want them to teach to the test. We want them to teach...
It sounds like we do.
Actually, we...
I think we want to do well on the test, but we don't want them to teach to the test. Here's something I would have to...
I think we do.
This is not a horrible test.
No, it's a good one, we know.
No, it's a good test.
The Sback is, is a pretty decent assessment. Believe me, I would be the first to tell you if I thought it was garbage.
And we could say we want our children to know the questions, the answers to the questions that are on the test, right?
Yeah, I would say the targets.
Right.
Do you, so to ask that, to ask this question, I mean, in a more focused way, do you, is, I'm taking it from what you're saying, that there's information in the data that would lead to interventions in the teaching process?
For the individual?
Well, yeah. End of knowledge. I mean, looking at this just off, off, like, our math scores were considered lower, so what's happening in our math instruction, what kind of learning do we need to provide for our teachers in order to increase their capacity, to increase a kid's capacity to understand conceptual and math, you know?
But are you asking individual interventions?
No, no, just district.
Okay.
It's district.
This is district.
We wouldn't plan...
We don't use the data to help, help individual students, so there's, so the individual has no incentive?
Not, well, think about it, when we get those assessment scores to the level that we need to intervene, yeah, it's, it's not soon enough. It's more programmatic measures that we're looking at.
Right.
So it's useful. It's incredible.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's part of the issue here is to see it as, right, this is part of being a good citizen in a community, really a lot of this is. And, I mean, there is a benefit to the individual in that students do need to practice taking tests. It's, it's a sad fact of life and, but it's true. And so, but it is a community contribution to data is really what we're doing. It's not helping your individual student at that moment or in that school year get a better education. It's, it's helping future students get a better education and hopefully it's, it's having us understand what's going on with the continuation of curriculum and a continuation of effort over years. But I just, it's, I'm not, I'm not saying tests, we take tests, it's not that, I'm just, I'm just answering questions that I hear regularly in the community about, look, our kids are, don't need to take tests, it's overtested, you know? And, and Sback is the least of our concerns in many ways, but we have the, what, the kneecap still on the science? Are we still doing...
Kneecap has changed.
It's changing too, or it changed? That's great, was that this year?
Last year was the first pilot year.
On, of what? On, of what?
Of the...
Science assessment.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't even know what they're calling it. They're calling it the science assessment.
That's fine, that's fine. And you assume it's moving more towards the S-PAC kind of concepts, or?
It's more interactive.
Interactive, at least, okay.
Yeah. We've only seen it one time and...
Right.
It's on computer. It's, it's S-PAC-like.
And that one, that one is, like, that the state created?
We're part of consortium.
Yeah, essentially, it looks similar to what I believe Connecticut and Rhode Island have used and a couple other states. I don't think that they created anything new per se, but it's new to us from D-CAP.
The other thing I'd say about this is it does tell us cohorts, whether it's a grade cohort or a socioeconomic cohort, that where we have a problem. And then, individually, we can figure out when you say it's not helping the individual student. I'm hoping that then there's a curriculum change, which actually does help that student in that cohort.
The trend data is very important to us. It tells us a lot of information on multiple facets.
About the program and educational...
Program, about teacher quality, about cohorts. I mean, there's so many different ways we can look at that data.
We're, we're, I mean, we are really, I, I can't speak for everyone, but some of us on the board are very excited about the quality of data we're hearing here. And we're very thankful. And also the longitudinal data, the cohort data, the, that sort of thing has been something we've been wanting for a long time. And we're really happy to hear that it's a priority for you. And as we break that down by, by sub-populations, I think that's really important too, to the extent it can be done and not be identifiable. We are very excited about that. So thank you for this, and we do value data. Because I guess I want to leave that. It's super important.
Thank you for doing it and keep looking at it.
Sure.
Be low.
Mike says we geek out on it, we geek out on it.
The longitudinal...
Like, can we do it today?
No, no data today. Well, the longitudinal piece is the part that we're, I think we're dying to kind of hear if that's productive or if it's fruitful for you as you get into the data. I know we have small samples here, but as you can find truth in it.
I just wanted, Nathan had, wants to say something, I'm resisting because I, I want to try to keep public comment to public comment if it's...
Ooh.
Huh?
Nice.
Well, I, I want to be mindful that there are, you know, people who are not able to make it or participate if we do have the, but... If, if it's an urgent question, go ahead, otherwise... But, you know, kind of from now on, that's going to be kind of protocol. Alright, perfect.
Thank you.
Great. Policy readings. I think we're moving around a pretty good trip here. So we have five policies. All of, did all of them come out of retreat? I think all of them did. Well, not retreat, the all-day planning session.
The all-day meeting.
Yes, the all-day mission.
Mission, vision, budgeting, board superintendent relationship, board expectations, and superintendent expectations. So let's go, start from the top and...
For the people that weren't at our all-day work session, the board came up with this, worked very hard to come up with this vision, and then began the idea of a mission. And I think where we are now is to decide, our superintendent had the suggestion that perhaps we have a district vision and that each school have their own mission. And so, we did not have time to consider that. So before we spend any more time on the board mission, I think we need to talk about that.
I mean, I have one...
Do you want to split it and have a separate discussion of the vision from the mission, or the mission from the vision?
No, actually, I think we've decided on the vision.
That's what I'm trying to compare here.
And, and so that's, that's there. We've done it. But now the question is, what do we do about this mission? What's the board's pleasure on mission?
Yeah, I mean, one thing is, is it mutually exclusive? Can, do we, so we have a district vision and a district mission, and then have each school also have their own particular mission? So one thing I noticed...
You're looking at me, I'm, I'm not to decide this. This is a board decision to talk about.
I would just say, this is less about whether it's school by school. I actually like the idea of each school having one very much, but... That's going to happen regardless. That's going to happen regardless. I don't get having a vision and a mission that are basically the same kind of thing. Like, we, we basically were trying to write two different sentences that captured the spirit of what we were trying to accomplish in the district under two different labels. And so I think if we're going to have a mission, I don't, what they're called, I don't really, I don't really know what the right word is for. But if it's, I, I need a better understanding of what this is supposed to convey that's different than the vision. And if it's just going to be another sentence that says something very similar, I'm not going to, just, I'm not sure why we have had it twice.
The vision is supposed to...
Is it more about values? Is it more concrete? Is it more specific?
Is it more directed maybe to?
I don't know, but I just, I need a better understanding of what...
The vision is supposed to be the big picture, and the mission is supposed to be how you're getting there.
Yeah. Well, as an outsider who was not part of that, just very briefly, I'll say the mission adds only one thing, which is that it, that it focuses on the individual of the child with talents, passion, and passions. And I think that it's basically talking about, I mean, this is just a brief reading, it's basically saying that this is our, our method for getting to the vision effectively. These are the values we instill in getting to this vision, but it could easily be wrapped into a vision and be done with it. And the second half of this, to provide an education that empowers our graduates to build a better future, if we're not talking about empowering the individual for some reason, it fits right into engage citizens and lifelong learners. So I don't know that that's even necessary. So that's just like, it looks a little bit redundant, and it looks like it should all be combined into one. That was not part of the history of that.
I did up and it can, if I, if I, in one, in one sentence, it says, a vision statement outlines what a company wants to be in the future, a mission statement describes what a company wants to do now.
Oh my goodness. Then it should all be mission.
Yeah, and I personally lean towards one. Though I do think we are going to have to be explicit about what we're calling it, because the other policies that we have in front of us tonight refer back to whatever it is that's here.
I certainly did all in all the policies, so we have to make a decision.
We have to call it S-PAC.
Yeah.
We're going to have civil mentioned and district missions, and like, we need to make sure that we're explicit with what we're calling this. So our policies can refer back to this. But I think I would personally lean more towards a single, we'll just say, vision for something for the discussion right now. Other comments? So do you want to take an action to amend? Do you want to just take a big...
I want to ask a question then. If you, maybe even more helpful to the people who weren't there, is if you cover up the mission and just look at the vision, is that good enough? Or is it missing something?
Do you care about first lines learning in the vision? That's what it does, it's saying...
I think it's real close. It, you know, maybe our schools cultivate a caring, creative, and equitable community that ensures, something that has it more forward-facing. Can I apologize? I was not there, so now I'm way too late.
I'm going to try to proceed on with this. So to say, I know it's hard, and it was hard for us then, but the question is, I'm not sure we put in time today to have this long discussion about this, but we would know what we want to do next if we can make a decision on that. In other words, if you think we'd just like one statement, but knowing you're just going to have one, this vision isn't quite it, then we could decide on a process later that would get us there.
So my, my thought, reading the vision, I don't like the, all, our schools are, I, I think we should have it be aspirational, because I'm not sure our schools right now, I think we strive to be an equitable community, I'm not sure we're there. I, I think it should be more aspirational than declarative.
Okay, I'm going back to the question. I'm going to call the question of whether you want two statements or one. And then we could work on what the one is at a different time with a different protocol.
It sounds like most people want one.
I think, I think most people want one.
We want one vision, and then the schools can do their own...
Should we take a, either make a motion on that, or a straw poll?
I think a straw poll is enough, because we're not adopting it.
It's a first reading, so. So who wants to edit out the mission and just go to the vision?
I want one vision.
Steve, are you abstaining?
No, I'm, I'm totally under one, and I'm...
I probably got a regret.
Okay, so we'll, on another agenda of another time, rework it together. But my question is, are you calling it a vision? It's very important for the next four documents you're doing. Are you calling it a vision, or are you calling it a mission?
Becky, you were thinking a vision and have it be aspirational?
Yes.
Rather than whatever a mission is?
A vision is what you want to be in the future.
I think it makes sense at the board level to have an aspirational statement.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
So we're calling it a vision, and we'll get back to it, and now you can go on to the other things.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Schedule a vision discussion, some aspirational point in the future. Budgeting. Budget policy, comments, discussion on our...
The sectoral opinion.
Well, in bullet number one, could you change mission to vision?
Yes. We will do that throughout.
Who's in charge of the edits? Are you, Jim?
Huh?
Are you in charge of the edits?
I can, I can be in charge of the edits.
So, this has the procedure and present, is the procedure and format part of the policy? Or will that be separate and procedure only?
I think it's policy as a procedure. I think we, because it's so pertinent to us.
Okay.
I think the idea was to have it actually be part of the policy.
You could actually call it a calendar, budget calendar, couldn't you? Instead of...
Not budget procedures, or budget process.
Process.
Yeah, process.
Which is kind of synonymous with procedure, but... Before we get all the way down into that section, the last statement in the opening section, "The board will create and charge a finance committee to ensure oversight and accountability for the district's finances." I'm interested in potentially clarifying that it would be a standing committee versus an ad hoc.
So we should make it say, charge a standing?
I think we have... Standing finance committee, yeah.
That makes sense to me that we'd be clear.
It should be, yeah.
Could we call that middle section the annual budget, calendar, and process?
Sure.
Signal exactly what it is.
Yes.
What would you call it?
Annual budget.
Annual budget, calendar, and process.
Which...
How about, instead of calendar, why don't we call it schedule, or scheduling process? Because calendar suggests that we've actually set dates. At least it doesn't mind mine. Are we setting dates? Huh? So will this be...
You did.
We're setting rough dates, but... So if we look in December... Okay. So Jim, if you look in December, January, public hearing has set in budget calendar?
I worry, because there's...
Is that going to... Is that different than what we're doing right now?
Because in, in September, we'll have to adopt the actual calendar.
Calendar of what's being done.
So maybe this gets called a schedule, and the thing coming up with very specifics is called a calendar.
Yeah, so how about annual budget, just schedule?
So, just because we don't have enough on our agenda, Ryan and I were talking about on the way in that this standing finance committee for our new board needs a charge. I don't know that we have one.
I don't think you'd have one either. I think when you give Peter's replacement, Ryan and I are kind of informally trying to get a grasp of what all her committees are.
Okay.
And I know we also need to give you some help on negotiations. So I think either the 19th and 3rd, we can probably do a committee red shuffle and give them all the needed charges.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the budget policy?
Just an editing thing, the budget presentation format is found there twice, once not in bold.
Oh, yeah.
And the capitalization is really uneven throughout the process.
I know we've talked about this in some of our last meetings. In May, the multi-year plan was presented by the superintendent. I know we have a CIP, there's a multiple year plan here. Just wasn't sure if we're referring to the most appropriate plan or document. Since we're saying it will be presented, I wanted to make sure that we actually were presenting what does make sense for this.
For a budget.
Right. Did we discuss, maybe I misremember it, but did, I thought we discussed making this somewhat vague, because it may...
I think that was what I was going to say.
It may vary kind of depending on, yeah, charge. So we don't have, so a future board can say, well, there needs to be a separate plan. The superintendent can say, well, that's CIP plus our, yeah, plus our, you know, a capital plan, building this plan.
It gives the superintendent discretion to...
So we're not defining another one, yeah.
Right, and the multi-year plan might, yeah, you know how I love plans. The multi-year plan might be simpler than the CIP plan, which is very hard for the average community member to catch up with. So it might be clear as pertains to the budget.
Yes.
I had a question, and I was, I was responsible for trying to draft this during the meeting, so if it's wrong, it's my fault. But number two on the second page, when I was looking at it again for, for character today, I thought, the one that says emphasizes cost efficiency measures, I almost thought we had said to take that out at the retreat.
We did.
Well, you were...
I don't know, before the, we talked about it long before the retreat.
You're sure of that?
Yeah, I know, we, we've talked about it for six months.
We did talk about taking that out.
I think we talked about taking that out, so sorry that it stayed in somehow.
Also, just as a formatting thing, we have, we have two sections of this, well, actually we have three sections. We have the introductory section where we've got bullets. We have the schedule section where we just have months listed, and then we've got the budget presentation format where we've got numbers.
Numbers, right.
It's walking, it's walking, it's walking.
Is that, is that okay with folks? Do we want consistency, or are we...
So we could turn the last one to bullets pretty easily, and then it would look similar. It should be, that's at least one thing. I don't know, the dates don't seem to let themselves to bullets, but we could at least hold the date or something, do something to make it look...
Yeah.
We could professionalize it.
When you're working on those capitals.
Yeah.
Other issues, comments, questions, et cetera. Ooh. Semi-colon missing on four. And the presentation format. The very opening sentence, the district's annual budget will, we need to insert be developed by the administration. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, here we're done, we'll move on to board superintendent relationship. Questions, comments, edits.
Under subjects of board's evaluation of superintendent, sixth line down, change mission to vision.
I have to do a search and replace on that.
Yeah.
Something caught my attention, section 1.2, last statement, "The board must not direct the actions of district staff and must not formally evaluate any staff member."
Other than the superintendent.
Right. Do we need to declare formally? Because we wouldn't informally evaluate anybody. I mean, we're not going to evaluate anybody, period. Correct? I mean, we're not going to, I mean, we could sit here and not write up a report, but we can say that we heard the seventh grade science teacher was doing a bad job, and we're not happy about that. It wouldn't be a formal evaluation, but it could be...
And the board should never do that.
The board shouldn't be doing that.
The board should...
Discuss. Like, it just felt like formally, I don't know, I felt like maybe formally it was a little bit too restrictive in terms of, like, we don't evaluate in any manner.
Correct.
Like, it was just simply, we don't evaluate.
I think that's right.
It does clarify.
Well...
You don't evaluate.
Well, how about this, you know, say we have an instance, like we just talked about in our training, where we do have to review whether or not an employee abused their discretion. That technically could be a formal evaluation. We've evaluated an action.
Yeah, but it's not a formal evaluation.
We haven't evaluated job performance, but we've evaluated an aspect of their performance. Performance, in a certain context.
But it's pretty narrowly defined.
Yeah.
And even in that case, then it is still the superintendent's position to do, conduct the actual evaluation, taking that consideration as a participant. I think this also clarifies it for staff, so that a principal cannot come, for, use an example, cannot come to a board member to lobby on their own behalf, knowing the performance evaluation is coming up, for example. It makes the line very clear, I think is a good thing.
There's a provision in discipline and dismissal below that has a nice way of saying it, except where, except where required by law or whatever it says. In other words, never unless you are required to by law.
Well, I was going to say, you never evaluate, you do make sure the law is followed. So something would come before us, as we just discussed, if someone was breaking the law.
It says involve the evaluating. In that lower, in 1.3, discipline dismissal, it talks about evaluating.
Yeah, it's a lot of legations, but it had to do with. I, I think we're okay. I refer, we have no choice but to do what's asked of us.
Right.
What's asked of us, but I think someone could technically say that we were.
Evaluating.
Evaluating. The job performance aspect, that's somewhere over the superintendent in this situation.
You know, I, now that I see the language you're pointing out, I'm thinking that these two sections are accomplishing different things. They're somewhat overlapping, but 1.2.
They're unintentionally overlapping, I think.
Yeah, 1.2 is probably saying must not formally evaluate, because that's what this section is about, formal supervision, we supervise the superintendent, the superintendent supervises everyone else, they do the formal evaluations, and then this is, you know, addressing the discipline and dismissal, where it's clear that there can be sometimes a little.
Where the board is involved.
So maybe that was the purpose of the word formally?
That's what I, I'm not sure, I know that I didn't come up with the word formally, that either came from the policy governance language or from the VBA policy, so I'm just, the VSBA policy, but I'm just guessing that maybe it says formal, because this section is about sort of formal.
Structure.
Structures.
I'm more wondering why, why the concept of evaluating is then restated lower? In other words, it's basically giving permission to evaluate employees in 1.3, discipline and dismissal. It's saying there are circumstances under which we will be evaluating employees.
No, we may be participating in decisions or actions that involve evaluating, but we're not conducting a formal evaluation, which is a thing, a formal evaluation is a specific thing.
So leading versus participating in?
Conducting a formal evaluation versus having some role to play in a process that involves.
You want the evaluation that happens.
Yeah.
So formally evaluating is conducting? I'm, I'm not sure where you get the idea of conducting.
Must not formally evaluate, I sort of read that as a board does not, as an entity, conduct the evaluation of employees, and that's, that section is kind of setting up that whole supervisory structure.
And participate in decisions and actions involving implies to me there's been evaluation, and now the board is asked to participate in decisions and actions based on.
Not evaluated.
And that, too, rarely happens, but there are some circumstances where it does.
I just think the idea of conducting versus something that's formal or not synonymous, that's what I'm concerned about, and I like conducting, I think that's appropriate, and I don't know what formal means.
So I did receive a, just a notice from the member of the public that they are not able to find these documents online, so I just wanna.
These policies?
Yeah.
They wouldn't be, we haven't adopted them yet.
Would the.
The packet.
Yeah, the packet be online for so people can review if they're read and.
How do we put the packets online traditionally? I don't have a packet, do you have a?
Agenda. I think it's possible to use, because, you know, part of the purpose of the readings is to have.
Get an employee in.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So anything in the packet that doesn't relate to personnel.
Personnel.
Would, could go online? There's a question mark after this.
And we do, this is still the very first reading, this is still discussion, so there's still several readings coming.
Yes.
So yes, there's nothing, there's still plenty of time for the public to weigh in on all the drafts.
But I, I think it is legitimate, yeah, unless you're, yes, as a member of the public, unless you're sitting here, even if you're sitting here listening to it, and you're not sure what we're talking about, so.
Let me check on that.
Okay.
So I would.
Let me check on that, though, because it's the board's responsibility to make policy. What, what I'm questioning is, is that the public has voted you all in to create these policies?
Yes.
So, so that's what I'm quite, so let me just check.
Okay.
And I would say it's a matter of, it's just sort of like having a packet here, if you come in and are gonna listen to us, and we've talked for two hours about something you have no documents on, it's not very much fun, and so that would be the same thing. If you're home and listening to us online, it would be nice to know what we're talking about, but if that's the case, then everything ought to have a draft on it, because if I go to the site.
A watermark or something.
And see this policy, I might get myself all in a twit about something that's, as you just said, are three drafts away, so.
And I've had community members tell me before, and it's like, so you as a board member, well, in Roxbury, you're policy governance, you manage by the board, you don't tell the superintendent to do this, you have policy that directs, will you please write a policy that includes? Language that would accomplish this? So I think people are interested in having us as a conduit to policy, so.
Well, I mean, my thought is, you know, I absolutely agree that, you know, we make the policy, we set the policy, we're elected to do that, but, you know, part of the reason of having the various readings, discussions, and having public comment is if a member of the public reads a policy we're considering but has not adopted and has concerns or questions they want to bring to the attention of the board, that's their opportunity to do so. And we don't necessarily have to listen to them, but otherwise, they don't have a meaningful opportunity to, to do that.
Be engaged. And we want to be.
Inclusive.
As inclusive as practical, which we understand, there's a bureaucratic burden and cost to being super productive in terms of documents, so we want to be sensitive to that, but in general, more is better.
It's also, just as a practical matter, they're public records, and so if someone asks for them.
They need to be provided.
It's much easier to just post them, so that no one has to ask for them.
It would just be easy, I mean, most of our files are pretty small, I mean, we'd just be able to scan them as a PDF and tag that on the.
Well, there were documents, so they can just be attached, right?
As to what?
Well, you mean post, like, you mean.
Posted.
It's always better in PDF, because that announcer party cannot alter the text.
I defer.
Yeah.
Nowhere beyond policy.
So, yeah, it's all right.
Good point, whoever brought it up.
Was there anything else on that?
So what, what did you decide about that?
Oh, right, we didn't.
You think we're distracted by this.
Why don't we just take, must not evaluate, formally, it confuses things, and I'm not sure it accomplishes anything.
I didn't have a good example for an informal evaluation, but it just, yeah, caught my attention, so.
So now I'm back to, well, then the next one is, like, contradicting. I realize it doesn't, but it does, right?
I don't think it does.
I don't think it does.
I don't think it does.
One is evaluate, and the other is participating in a decision that involved.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I think one is, you know, we don't sit down and evaluate the performance of employees, but there might be, you know, disciplinary action or some sort of action where we're required to review a decision that was made based on an evaluation.
We are allowed under 1.3 discipline to participate in a, to participate in a decision in evaluating an employee.
No.
No.
Decisions or actions involving the evaluation.
If it's required by law or negotiated.
That part I understand, but participating in a decision involving, I mean, there's a lot of words there, or actions involving the evaluating, is the same as participate in evaluating.
It does not.
No, it's not. Okay. Because someone could come up, someone could come up and complain about their evaluation and a disciplinary action based on their evaluation, we could actually be evaluating the evaluation in our decision, you know, if it's required, but we won't do the actual evaluation, we won't sit down with Principal X and say, you know, great job or bad job based on whatever data, that's our job. You ready to move on? Steve, let's look at that.
I put formally back in at that point, but I think it's, it's better than redundancy, but, or better than contradiction, but you guys, I'm, I'm fine to be, you know, on the scale of one to 10, I care about a three on this. Let's go four.
Okay. More comments on the board superintendent relationship draft policy. You good? Okay. Board expectations. And this one, I think, has the most new sections added that were not talked about.
Right, and I think before we jump into the full discussion, there, most of the new additions aren't included in the draft, it was sent out in the packet. Well, not most, but, yeah, I apologize, the board committee section, section F, I did fill in, but I didn't realize, I didn't read the section in the packet, because I thought I knew it was coming, so I didn't realize until today until that, that board committee stuff was not included.
All right, there's some that I could find.
Right, so there was some more information related to the other board officers, the vice chair, the record keeper, et cetera, that's not included in this. Obviously, the stuff that's in front of us now, the, is the same, it was just there are some additions that aren't included in this draft. So there would still be more stuff forthcoming for another discussion that would, yeah.
So did you want us to discuss what's here now?
The stuff that is here, we could, yes. I don't think. Right, the sections that are in front of us are up to date, it's just that there are still, like, I really did flesh out the board committee sections, there's a lot more details in terms of standing ad hoc, what's required for us in terms of charges, durations, reports, et cetera. The same thing, we didn't have anything related to the other offices, we have a vice chair, we've elected a parliamentarian, record keeper, et cetera, we didn't have anything in regards to their duties, so when we really fleshed out the board chair duties, I included the other officers in there as well. So yes, the information that is in front of us now is up to date, with the exception of the stuff that's been accidentally omitted.
Make sure you get to me that.
So folks, I mean, other than the inclusion of that next time. Comments on the expectations draft policy? Yeah.
We've never had this much detail about the chair's role before. And I wondered if some of it is really, what kind of material we should have in a policy? You know, I mean, things like the chair is expected to be a strong advocate for the district. And that, some of the stuff around, you know, is that, it's just, it's, yeah, it seems a little weird to be in a policy, it's more sort of, you know, how to be a board chair.
Did this come, where did this come from?
This come from.
VSBA.
This was, it was a combination, so the sections regarding, like you're talking about, the advocacy, et cetera, that was information from the VSBA for best practices for board chair. It wasn't in policy, it was just, we had, I'd use it to kind of structure the responsibility of the chair. Yeah, so the VSBA would say that a board chair's primary role is the team building, goal setting agendas, and running meetings effectively. The community stuff as well, that that was the VSBA's framework for, this is how a good board chair operates and how it accomplishes board work successfully.
In practical terms, the way a board chair functions effectively is that they remember that they are, they serve at the pleasure of their other members of the board, and that they check in with the board informally, constantly, to make sure that they are representing, that their leadership represents the desires of their, of the other folks on the board. They don't have to, and so what I'm saying is that there may want to be a statement about the fact that the board serves at the pleasure, or the chair serves at the pleasure of the board, I mean, ultimately, that is the most important political point about being a chair.
And under community, it does say, though the chair can speak for the board, the chair cannot act independently and direct any actions by themselves.
In practical terms, that's the result, as soon as you act independently, you lose your chair, your chair. But it's, it's one of those things that you see, you know, a good chair just simply says, am I solid all the time? So, you know, this is a good document. It is, it is a bit verbose, but it is.
Yeah, I, I think it's helpful.
There's a lot of good stuff in there.
Yeah.
On the meeting, some of these things I'm not sure we do. I don't know what, to enforce the rules relating to debate.
That's a Roberts rules.
That's a Roberts rules, sounds like.
Which section are you in right now, Bridgette?
I'm in the meetings, protect the board from obviously dilatory motions by refusing to recognize them.
Ooh.
The board chair.
If he gets mad at us.
That would not have to be mentioned. To stage a walkout when necessary.
And I wasn't sure about the authenticating by signature, if that's even something that is a power of a school board chair?
There are times, there are documents, and Jim, you know better than I would, that the board chair does sign on, on things, I can't give you a specific example, but I do know in the past.
More than I have previously thought.
And it'll be only your name on it, even though Steve says you're representing the board.
You do that on behalf of the board, not on the district, because you don't need to do it for.
It, it's not always exciting stuff, but.
No.
It's a good document, it clarifies a lot of things.
Yeah, no, this is great work around.
On D1, I would like to advocate that if we're gonna have that section, that we should have the exact language of 312H. And not, which.
Creating a new, right?
Yeah, the exact language is, at an open meeting, the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to express its opinion on matters considered by the public body during the meeting, as long as order is maintained, public comment shall be subject to reasonable rules established by the chair.
You're looking at E1?
Well, I'm looking.
Oh, D1, sorry.
So that's what that statute actually says.
I said, I'm fine with that.
That's section 312.
That's section 312H, which is what's cited there.
So get rid of the summary, just put in the actual statute.
It's just sort of, because it says open meeting law, that would be my.
I think that's really smart.
It's just put in there.
We don't try to create something that isn't true, or isn't already established true.
What is the tape or videotape, the?
So I looked into that a little bit, and Ryan and I talked about it, I don't see that.
Anyone use tape or videotape anymore?
Oh, right, so then we use that, they can record it. I don't see that in the, in the statute where you could cite it, Jim Condoleezza, the Secretary of State, has, says on their website that they construe the law to allow taping or videotaping of meetings. I can't think of any reason why it wouldn't be permissible to record a public meeting, as long as you're not disrupting the procedure, but it's, I don't think it actually says anything else. Open meeting law, so we could, I mean, we could add it to the, to the policy to be clear that we're fine with it. I agree, maybe record is better than videotape.
Yes.
Haven't thought about that.
I don't know if it belongs in here, participation in board meetings. And it's, it's kind of a personal concern, is, is the issue of participation in board meetings from afar? And how do we want, is that, is that something we should, we should be clear in policy, or is it simply something the board just kind of does on an ad hoc basis? But through technology limitations, it's often felt as if it's virtually impossible, even though we also say that we do it, those of us who've tried to do it kind of give up after a while. And it's not that big of an investment in technology to actually make that work, but it requires, I think, the board to either value it or not value it. I don't know if a board member has a, has a statutory right to it, I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
So maybe, maybe not, but I'm sure the board itself can establish the procedures around that, and I don't know how that gets done or where that gets done, but I would just say that as a board, at some point, we should make a decision about whether we're going to create the environment that allows that or not, because right now, it just feels like I'm out of luck if I, if I'm traveling, which I don't want to be, I want to be participating.
So should we, I, I feel the same way, I, yeah.
I've seen you try to call in.
And I also just feel it's something that the technology exists, and there's a lot of entities out there that take advantage of it. Yeah, some of the video stuff's a little more clumsy, but. Yeah, some of the video stuff's a little more clumsy, but certainly good audio participations. Maybe a line, you know, reasonable measure shall be taken to allow for...
Accommodate.
Yeah, audio or virtual attendance by board members who are unable to be physically present.
Well, so then the question, I have to say, also having tried it, is reasonable. So, what is that? And often, if you're away and it's just audio...
This day and age, putting me up on a Google video is so super easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've presented that way to boards before, so it's, it's super easy.
You have a big steamhead on the wall.
That's gonna be my question, is, is that technology not something, it doesn't require a financial investment?
Oh, gotcha. We are in Google world.
It requires the imagination to use it.
As of July 1.
I think part of this, Libby, is we just, it's not that we couldn't, we haven't done it well. So the question...
We can do it very easily.
I mean, my other thought on that is, it's, my question's, it's such an easy problem to solve, that do we really need a policy?
No, and I don't, I'm not saying we do. I just, I just, maybe it was getting a sense, I want to get a sense from the board whether the board feels it's something worth trying to accommodate or not. And I don't, I wouldn't be insulted either way, it's more a matter of, let's just get it clear so we can move on, kind of a thing.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, given, you travel a lot, I travel fairly much, you know, Bridget and others travel too. It's, I think it's, it's something we can do, it's something we should do, and it, it will increase participation, and we might have a quorum problem at some point.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, it's a philosophical discussion about, it's not here, but in some boards, they used to say, you miss two meetings, you're out. Or you, you know, they used to write down how many meetings, so, but what does missing mean? Are you here? Is it a quorum if you're here on Google Docs?
Well, I mean, you can, you can have meaningful participation.
And it does follow a lot.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, it's a philosophy.
When you first started speaking, I thought you were going to talk about the technology to allow the public to interact more with us at the meetings.
It's another level of it.
So it is another part of that discussion, but...
You can call Jim.
We got it tonight.
Maybe there's a general census, or a consensus that, or something that we want to use technology in general to increase participation in every way we can. We don't want to create, you know, financial, big financial burdens, or, and that includes staff time, to make that happen. But if it's easy to access, we should start to think that way, about using technology to increase participation in every way.
We don't have the time, Jack, we are 25 minutes over.
Okay, so we're not going to put it in here.
No, but we ought to try. I think, we don't need to put it in the policy, but we ought to give it a try.
I, I think we should make a board commitment to get it up and get it running. I think once we make ourselves, I don't think it's that hard, I think once we do it a few times, get a system down, yeah, and you'll probably...
Steve, I got to cover a door.
Thank you so much.
Be one of the, the first. Okay, last one, superintendent expectations. Comments or questions on the reading of this policy?
Just gotta fix the numbering.
Hands are technology also.
Two of them over there.
Who's editing this one? Jim?
I'm, I'm just making notes of edits on all of them, and then I...
The numbering.
They're minor edits.
I'll ask one question, 2.2, number six. I don't know much about contract law, but proposed contracts provide flexibility to remove non-unionized employees for cause. Is "cause" the best term to use there? Was "performance," or is...
"Cause" is a term.
Is that the best?
You could also say "just cause," but "cause" is your right word.
I kind of thought so, but it was something I'm not terribly familiar with, and it seemed a little bit odd, so I just wanted to get some verification.
"Cause" is a very well-established word in law.
In contract law.
I'm just really happy about 2.13, foster district culture that is open and responsive to the concerns of stakeholders. To me, that's a wonderful, positive, aspirational statement in there, but it just makes me want to do a happy dance.
We have submission vision issues in this one.
Since we don't have one.
It says, 2.0, global expectation, the last part of the first paragraph says, "in a manner that does not violate the mission and core values of the district." We had debates about that. Did we decide to leave it in even though we don't have values? We started talking about whether we wanted to have, you wanted to have values or not. That was an unanswered question.
It was an unanswered question.
Because we had the, we had a list to be for.
We did have, we had a list before, and then, yes.
So that's another question we have to decide.
Won't those be more like the "ends"? Our values go on our "ends"? I guess not. "En's" are what we achieve, "values" are how we live.
And we were avoiding using the word "ends."
Yeah.
We are referring to something here, and what is that?
The two things.
It could be consistent with commonly accepted business and professional ethics and practices, and with achieving progress toward the district's vision.
Yeah, I was going to say, in a manner that advances the vision of the district. It does not violate, because it's back in the negative world.
That's kind of cool.
You want to stick with core values?
I hesitate to have it in there if we don't have.
Yeah, if you don't have, yeah, because then it's...
No, it's just the vision. It's going to include our values.
The vision of the district, yeah.
Which should represent your values.
And your policies, which are down.
And it's, it's also continuing to speak in the positive rather than in the negative in this, right? It's like continues to aspire and...
So, but, yeah, we needed, we didn't really resolve this. It's, it's the same thing in the last sentence of 2.0, that we had this bad language.
That can be deleted.
The vision, I think so, the vision there.
And then it says, "link to..."
Wait, didn't we just, didn't we just state that, though, in the, the way we redid 2.0?
Yeah, I think, I think we just get rid of that line.
It's kind of now established.
Because "in a manner that advances the vision of the district, and must lead and manage in a manner that adheres to and reflects the district's vision."
Now, I'm wondering if we should still cut the first clause and leave this, because I kind of like leading.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because they're two different ideas.
They're two different ideas, yeah. So we could cut two off after ethics and practices.
Yeah.
And then leave that last one in, with vision instead of values.
That, that what?
So adheres to and reflects the district's vision.
Cool. Wow, there's some pretty high bars here. The superintendent must employ best practices for retention of staff.
That's actually not new. I think it just says, the superintendent must not fail to employ...
Best practices was in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't fall short.
I mean, if it, it doesn't, the fact that it was there, it has to be there.
Absolutely. Not second best practices. The best practice.
You guys have a list of those so clear.
Where do I see that list?
Bridget, you know, I don't think I remember noticing this in other policies. Have we referred to policies in the past as district policy or board policy?
It's, it's totally inconsistent at this point. We made a decision as a retreat, and start going to district policies?
Yes.
But we haven't gone back and fixed that.
Because there are no other policies for the district, other than board policies.
Right.
Which are district policies.
I think I have a note on that, I forgot. Can I, I'm sorry I missed this before, but we've completely gotten away from that, that standard of, that the superintendent, that the board is judging, that the superintendent shall be the judge of these things. I can't remember how that's worded.
No, we're not completely away from that.
The judge of what thing?
The judge of what thing.
Yeah.
In the board superintendent relationship policy...
Yeah, that's what, that's where I was missing it.
It says that the superintendent, in managing the district, is under superintendent's discretion. The superintendent has discretion to use any reasonable interpretation of the district's policies. The board must respect and support decisions made by the superintendent that reflect a reasonable interpretation.
That's where best practice for staff retention is okay. That's why, I was just seeing how that ties together, because you need, you need a standard to judge things by. So that's fine.
That's the no-second-guessing line.
Well, yeah, it's that very high standard of, that is totally not reasonable. It's, that's the standard.
Because we have all new terribly clear policies, so he knows exactly what to do. Are we okay?
Yeah, the only other thing is emergency superintendent succession. I think we discussed this, maybe decided against it, I misremembered. She has something in there about just not ensuring that the administrator designated as potential interim successor is aware of that designation, but that the board is aware of the designation too? Or at least the board chair is aware of the designation.
And therefore, the board should be aware, right?
Yeah, but the duty from the superintendent would be filled by telling me with the idea that I told him.
And it stands until it's changed? It's done at least annually, and then it stays?
Oh, there being, you know, should something happen to the superintendent where, you know, this succession is quick and unplanned.
I win the power ball.
Or many other things that may occur.
That's the only thing.
We don't have pre-staff, we're fighting the opposite.
Administrator designated as a potential is, and, after that, before the is, and the board chair.
Yes.
Superintendent must ensure the administrator's name is the interim successor, and the board chair is aware.
Are aware.
Are, sorry.
Well, except then the, then...
Oh, right, then it's not a...
Yeah, the change.
So it's reasonably proficient.
The potential interim successor is reasonably proficient. How about this, how about, "and that the potential interim successor is reasonably proficient for the role." Get rid of that comma, "and is reasonably aware of the board's superintendent issues."
I think it should just be another sentence.
Yeah.
We tried to put too much into that sentence.
So it's just a period, the superintendent must also ensure.
Is there, is there a responsibility that this person, I mean, I guess you're, the superintendent is appointing this person, whether they like it or not, ultimately?
Well, they have to be willing.
No, no, and they have to be told.
Oh, I see it there, I'm sorry. Willing deserved, okay. Well, they can be told, but that doesn't make them willing, but willing makes them willing.
So the second, she says that the superintendent must ensure that an administrator designated as potential interim successor and the board chair are aware of that designation. The potential interim successor must be reasonably proficient for that role, and reasonably familiar with the board and superintendent issues.
So what's capable mean? It means that they have time?
I think it means that they have the skill set.
And we discussed that it was true, it doesn't require licensing, because that's, that's not typically necessary.
They probably went down, probably be someone with another full-time job, just gonna have to step out of that job.
I'm just wondering why it has to say reasonably proficient for the role if they have to be capable.
I wouldn't choose a teacher or an I A who doesn't have administrative experience.
But they're capable.
It has to be somebody with administrative experience, I would imagine that, that's what that means.
Someone who can step in and, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, are there questions or comments? Only 40 minutes over.
Given everything, not bad.
Members of the public are hanging in there.
Nine is a pretty common adjournment.
That's great.
Perfect. Okay, let me know if you can read it.
Sure. I loved all of the first day of school stuff. The presence of social media was great.
Yes.
The memo, the weekly memo was great. Getting a copy of what you shared with the staff was really interesting to see, so just a kudos to, on all of those friends. Thanks.
Yeah, no, they present a...
Thanks to everyone in the district for a great start to the school year.
Great communication, yes.
I heard from parents great things about their, how pleased they were with the start of the school week.
Good.
And unions looking good, and that's not an easy feat to pull off right now.
Yep.
And stay tuned very shortly for a picture of the best deal that we got today. With colors and everything.
Yeah, fantastic job.
It's just, just a great start.
So, I didn't think about this, but the email I sent about how are we doing with Roxbury? How are we doing?
I don't, I just, that was not a question that was on the agenda, right? Well, I think we talked, we've talked about not putting people on the spot without...
Oh, okay.
Warning that someone's gonna come up, so I don't want to cut off Jim or the superintendent, but I just want to say...
I thought Jim said we would hear that, that's why I asked.
Well, you did ask.
Okay, we'll do it later.
Yes.
I can answer them. Some of them are quick. Do you want me to just answer the quick, quick ones?
It's up to Jim.
So the food situation right now is that, so Tina asked how food was getting to Roxbury. So currently, Jim and the kitchen staff here in Montpelier are cooking this, the high school are cooking the students' food, and then bussing it, trucking it over to Roxbury until October. The reason being is that the hood project got messed up in the kitchen, so what, the hood is being installed in October, and once that's installed, we can use the stove over there and all that kind of stuff. So everything's pretty much ready to go, except for the hood. So we have some staff who's there.
So then will they cook there?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, they will cook there. I'm just trying to remember.
And how's the bussing going?
The bussing, the bussing is, is, I would chalk it up to first days of school, kind of bussing challenges that most places experience. The bus from Roxbury to the Mays Street Middle has been about 15 minutes late every day, so it's something that we're talking to the bus company about, do, do we want to change the route so it's not going directly through, you know, middle of Montpelier at a time that's very busy for traffic? So we're trying to work out some staff who's around that. I mean, there's, there are first day issues that happened. Some of it was merger-related, some of it was just first day school-related, so, so we're working on trying to get that there 15 minutes earlier than it is currently showing up.
Yeah, and I do just want to reiterate, we're kind of, we're decorum, and I know that you did send an email, and I got lost in the mix, but let's, let's try to, you know, stick to the agenda to the extent we can, and, you know, read stuff beforehand, ask, ask questions by email beforehand, so, you know, either it can be, if it's a simple question, it can be answered, or, you know, if it's something that we discussed, there's preparation for it.
Yeah, and Heather and I are getting those packets together on Friday morning, so any questions for the next Wednesday board meeting should be to maybe for Friday, so we can get it in the stuff, get it in the packets.
Thank you for those answers.
And if there is an email that was overlooked, then it's something we could wait for, so... for, so, you know, can guess after the meeting and... A adjourn, and we do need to formally adjourn.
Who's going to adjourn?
Okay, second, second, favor. Great, thanks all.